Paul.
Andrew Franklin. Oh, sorry. Uh, roll call Andrew Franklin.
Uh, Ben Wen.
And Danielle Bailey are present. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Ben.
Second.
All in favor of this vote, aye?
Aye, aye.
The agenda is approved. It's a wordy one today, but is there a motion to uh move into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Can you? Okay, can you state the motion, Andrew?
Sure, I uh. Don't have the language in front of me, so.
Do you have the language in front of you?
Yeah, hold on a second here.
Yeah.
I can read it. Okay.
I moved to convene into closed session uh pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one C, section nineteen point eight five one E and section nineteen point point eight five one F.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to move into closed session pursuant to section nineteen eighty-five one C, one E and one F. Uh specifically for the purposes of discussing a personnel matter which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such discussions, including coverage for leaves. In addition, for the purpose of deliberating regarding specific public business, the nature of which requires closed session. And for the purpose of discussing compensation of a public employee and potential employment for another. Pub- oh, that's old, that's old language was up, but for the purpose of discussing compensation of a public em- oh no, that's in here, I'm sorry. Uh for discussing potential employment and for another public employee position specifically a contract for interim business manager. Uh we'll do a roll call vote, Andrew Franklin.
Aye.
Ben Wen.
Aye.
Danielle Bailey votes aye. Uh I know there are participants online, I can't give an exact time of how long this closed session will take. Um, I wish I could, but I don't think it will be incredibly long. Is that me- medium, as my daughter would say, sorry. Okay, so we are gonna move into closed now. And it looks like everybody's back in. Okay, so we are back in open session, I'm gonna pull up the agenda. Uh, we're reconvening into open, are there any motions you would like us to consider? This time. Carla or Ben?
Uh, sure, uh, I will make a motion to approve the interim director of business and operations contract for Todd Gray, right?
Gus Knit.
Oh, no, for Gus Knit, as discussed in closed session.
Okay.
Sorry.
Second.
All in favor of voice vote?
Aye.
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 Hello guys.
Sorry Gus, I called you by the wrong name.
We are going to get to you in just a moment, mister, is it Knit or Knit? Oop, I can't hear, I can't hear.
Oh, we can't hear you, it's Knit though, he told me today.
Okay, okay. Is Ms. Jamel on? Is she around? She, she turned her camera.
Need a camera, Karen.
I'm here.
Turn your camera on, so we can see your face.
Hi.
There you are.
Here.
So. It's not, everybody knows now, but we wanted to have a moment to look at, look at you and offer some gratitude. Um, Karen, your last day is Friday, right?
Yep, my last day in the office is tomorrow, but.
Last day in the office is tomorrow, so if you want to give her hugs or say hello, tomorrow is your last chance.
You wanna make me cry?
I just wanted to say that you have been an indispensable resource to me since I've joined the board. Was that two decades ago? No?
Just, yep, at least.
Four, four years ago, um, and I'm so grateful for um for all of that. And I'm really excited and wishing you the best on your new journey, so.
Thank you, thank you, I'm very excited.
Ozaki Food Pantry, right?
I will be working at Family Sharing, which is Ozaki, yep.
Yep, they're very lucky to have you, and I just want to appreciate you.
Yeah, and Ozaki County, I live in Grafton, so I'm gonna be working with my community and it's this is just something I'm very excited about.
Yeah.
So, thank you, thank you to everybody. I will miss you all.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Um, because Karen, you know, we can't give you a proper goodbye this week, but I hope we'll be able to invite you back soon to a meeting and maybe in February or something.
Sure.
To put some horns and shake some bells and all that kind of stuff. I, I don't even remember how long we've known each other for really, really long.
Yeah, cuz I have, you know, my, I was a Glendale parent for a long time, and then after we moved and I became an employee, so I have a, a really love for this district and I know how special it is and I really appreciate it.
I can't remember a time in this district when you weren't here, for me, cuz I've my kids started here about fourteen years ago, God, I'm so old, so. I, I'm, I'm not gonna say much, and I'm sitting in my car cuz I don't wanna cry today, but um I'm really happy for you for your new opportunity, but really sad for me personally. And for a district, I'm gonna miss seeing your smiling face and your candi- optimism and your work ethic and just the way you just um, you know, bring your best self every day.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not that far away.
I know, I know, so I, I wanna thank you for being just a role model of positivity and optimism and warmth, um. And just, uh, I know you'll take that to your, you know, the rest of your life and whatever jobs you end up doing and uh like Danielle, just wanna share my profound gratitude for you for sharing yourself with our district and our students and our staff for so long.
Thank you. Um, I do wanna say something really quick, I just wanna say just because I do have such a personal history with the district, you know, my my children started K four there, that was very formidable for them, and I always have loved the community of Glendale, and um I just wanna say that I've seen a lot. Um, a lot of people come and go, you know, even as a parent, but this admin team right now is really, I mean, they are giving everything, they're all right now, and I have never seen a, a team work better and have a good time, but still exactly know they just, they're meshing really well, and I just wanted to say thank you to you guys. I feel like even though I know we're having a hard time right now and it's not ideal, that the team and the people are truly amazing, and that is one hundred, I, that's the one thing I'm gonna miss. So, thank you to my team.
I'm not gonna say a lot because I think I've cried three times this week and you're almost wanna start talking to you, but thank you for that, thank you for being amazing, for always being there for all of us on this team, like anybody that needs help with anything in the entire district. And um, thank you for walking me around on interview night and making me feel welcome from the first second. Um, I'm just gonna miss the heck out of you, and I'm glad you're gonna hang out for a little bit in case we have questions and just be available because we're gonna have questions, I'm sure.
That's okay, you can call.
Ironically, one of my former study team members from Stritch is at the food bank that she's going to, and so when I found out, I gave him a little bit of grief, they're stealing you, so. But I know you guys will have, it'll be great, and you'll love it.
Thank you, everybody.
Ms. Karen, um, I know you won't miss our super long late night board meeting, so, right, where we've kept you hostage filming us and you can still watch him, you know, if you want.
Oh, I probably will.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Alright, well, um, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Mr. Knit. We just wanted to formally uh welcome you uh and thank you for agreeing to come in and support our district through this difficult uh time, um, and wanted to introduce you to our community, so. Oh shoot, cannot hear you. Doesn't seem like you're muted. And I can tell you can hear us because you were smiling at the appropriate moments.
Well, while Gus is turning on, I'll speak for myself and say that when we met Gus, um, he certainly, you impressed me Gus with your plain spokenness and your uh willingness to dive in and get your hands dirty and support the, the board and learning and um I was just very, very impressed, so I'm thrilled that you're joining us and excited to work with you in moving forward. And hopefully your speakers working.
Maybe if you leave the call and rejoin? Let me see, he's not being muted by you, Allison, or?
No, he's not muted at all.
Right, 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 okay.
You could dial in.
I hear, yeah, it's like a weird sound, it's kind of like.
Oh, like, yeah.
Like, oh, there we go.
Try your strategy.
That's my technology strategy for everything, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off, turn it on.
Time honored.
Blow on it, that's my Nintendo hot tip. Um.
Can't he dial that number I just posted on his phone and?
You can't hear me through the phone either.
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm just gonna use my phone tonight.
Okay, well, we all saw your face, so. Welcome, I don't know if you wanna just introduce yourself to our community a little bit, that would be great.
I'm um, uh, my name is Gus Knit, I um have been, I had been actively employed uh in education for forty-two years before I retired in June of twenty twenty-one, uh, eight years was as a teacher, fifteen years was as a business manager, including a included in that fifteen years with a three-year stay at DPI as a financial consultant to other school districts. And then my final twenty years as superintendent. Since I retired in twenty twenty-one, I, this is now my third interim position. Um, I did one for fifteen months at Altoona as a business manager. And I'm currently also helping out in the Randolph School District near Beaver Dam. Uh, a couple days a week as they go through a transition there. So, um, I was in the district today, got a chance to meet with people, I'm getting ready to jump in and see what um what's going on and figure out where we um where we go from here, uh, but I think we'll get things resolved and um target is that everything will be squared away by June. Um, and so we'll go from there.
Thank you Gus, and I just wanna say one of um, when we were talking to you about the position, um, something that I really uh, found commendable and that I know our, our district will and our community will appreciate is that you said, you know, you're all about candor and you're not gonna sugarcoat uh something that shouldn't be, you know, sugarcoated, if it's good news, it's good news, if it's bad news, it's bad news. And you're, you know, you're gonna share that with us, and I, our community is very supportive and all, I think the most important thing is just transfer transparency and information sharing, um, and so I that I'm very pleased you're the person who uh we get to, to do this with because that, that just seems like that's part of who you are, so.
Um, yeah, that, yeah, that, the community can, will understand that as they as they see me um at meetings and things like that, that I will call them as I see them and, and also, those things that aren't as positive will be talking about how we're going to correct them and and get them to a positive, so that is what will transpire.
Great. Um, alright, anything, did we lose Carla, or can I just not see her? She turned her camera off. Oh, okay, and I just wanna say thanks to Gus, it was great having you today.
I'm driving home, so my, my son is holding my computer.
Okay, alright, well, thank you Gus, I'm not seeing um anything from the community, so. Um, we look forward to working with you.
Alright, you too.
Oh.
I got it, I'm able to mute people quickly.
Hi Anna, okay. Alright, so thank you Gus, and uh we are going to move on to, is it budget update? Yes.
Yes.
Budget update. So there are two documents, um ironically, I threw together um um, some information, the big thing this week was the call with DPI and figuring out what grants we can still um apply for reimbursement for, which will help our cash flow. Um, so I put something together, and then Danielle, I know you had an opportunity to connect with Todd this morning and have a conversation, and then he put something together, and they were very similar, so I left both documents, even though there's some overlap um in the information, but just um gives an overview and they're both in Board Docs Public View um that we had that meeting with DPI, um Kelly's working really hard on special ed claims and high cost claims, the window for twenty-two, twenty-three is open, so we can claim those for last year. Jenica's working um with DPI, DPI and making sure that we are um utilizing all of our title funds and then the ESER piece. Um, I think I might have mentioned this at a previous meeting. We do have some of that allocated for after-school tutoring costs, so I'm, I'm gonna reach out to Right Way, see how much that transportation will cost so that we know how much ESER we have left, and then I spoke um even with, with Gus today about some of the types of things that we can claim using ESER three, it's pretty broad, so we'll sit with Jenica and look at professional development. Um, you could use, he said something about a counselor because it's um for SEL, so just figuring out how we want to use those ESER funds so that'll also obviously help with cash flow. Um, there's some, a smaller um grant that I'll work with Denise on, um that supports McKinney Vento. Um, and then DPI uh just made a recommendation moving forward that we submit our claims quarterly instead of like waiting to the end and then submitting everything because that also will help with cash flow because then we'll get reimbursements um at different times throughout the year instead of all at once. Um, and then Danielle, I don't know if you wanna speak at all to Todd, yeah, update or your conversation?
Sure, um, I just, so I wanna highlight a couple things for people who might not be able to look at the documents, the, there was um sixteen thousand dollars in title funds that will carry over from last year, so that will apply, you know, to this, to this last budget, um and the SR three funds minus what Allison you mentioned for after-school tutoring, transportation. We don't have that number yet, but it was seven hundred and forty-six thousand, that will help to offset um spending from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, right Allison?
Yep, yep.
Um, and so, so that's, that is, that is positive news. Allison, for the, I have a question before I give you the Todd update. For the um high sped costs that Kelly's looking into, the high cost aid, do we know where that might um like top out at? Do we have an idea of how much that could be? Oh, hi Kelly.
Oh, hi Kelly.
You heard your name and you just appear.
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
Um, I'm working, the window just opened and um it's my first time submitting high cost claims. And I'm not sure what's going to fit where, but um I'll do my best to, to get what I can.
Ramp it up, I vaguely remember like a number being thrown out, but I don't know that that was accurate, but it, it could be a good amount, I think, so. I don't know Kelly, if you wanna just share a little bit, I mean, this isn't like, doesn't give us a number, but just kinda what that threshold is, what's considered high cost?
Sure, so um a student is considered a high cost when they hit the thirty thousand dollar threshold. Um, and the state has like some formulas, so I actually don't get to calculate um specifically like services and what those costs are per minute, the state kind of has a formula and does that for you, and you go in and enter it. And um, so all I know, it's a thirty thousand dollar threshold, I believe I have a number of students that meet that threshold. Um, but I'm gonna um have to work closely um with somebody that's done that before, just to make sure um I'm getting, I'm getting the most out of it.
Thanks Kelly.
Mm-hmm, thank you Kelly.
Yep.
And if I might just jump in?
Oh, please Gus.
Absolutely.
Have, having this, having done this in other districts, in, in my in the Partyville district, my final district there when we did high cost, uh it's difficult to calculate how much because the state has a set dollar amount for high cost, and it all depends upon how many claims come in, I mean, some years I was funded at a lower percentage than other years. Um, I think, I wanna say last year I was funded at thirty percent or something like that, but I know one year I responded at fifteen percent because there were a lot of claims, so to be able to calculate, it's going to be, in advance will be difficult for any of us to do. Uh, but certainly it would be additional money that we would see, that would, that would, that we could use to help, but in educating our kids.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, my update from Todd is, is uh, it was similar to Allison's update. Um, he is doing the process of digging into the accounting, and that is going to take some time. Um, but he is working with our auditors, PMA Barrett, and he is looking forward to working with Gus and having Gus get in there to offer some assistance digging in, apparently you guys have uh known each other for a hundred years, according to Todd, worked together for a hundred years, something like is, I, I, which worries me about his math, just kidding, just kidding, no, um, jokes, so, uh, okay. So Todd, so I mean, his message was like um, our, your staff is going to be paid, your, your kids are, you know, your doors are staying open, you, like, we, there are we're getting through this, that's gonna take some time, this accounting piece, but, but um we have options, um, you know, to just ensure that everything continues to run smoothly, um. So, so you know, like his, his takeaway is he understands the urgency of the situation, he's really prioritizing our district in this work. Um, and his suggestion was to have um convene a session, a, a strategy meeting soon, um, to start talking about budget strategy and all of those things while the, the accounting piece continues, you know, to evolve, so um yeah, so, so it was a good conversation, he's available to the board, you know, to our admin team, he's working with everybody, um the DPI news was good, that's his update. Um, and that's my update then, I guess, yeah. So, are there any um, any visitor, uh, public comment, participation, any, anyone wishing to ask questions? Comments?
I, I.
Oh, hold on one second, oh.
Oh.
That's okay, I just want to well, you don't have to raise your hand, you're the only person, but.
I can't, I can't even figure out how to raise my hand, that's why I just blurted it out.
That's okay, I have the same, same problem, so I understand, um, if you could just say your, state your name and address?
Sure, um, my name is Katie Steele and I um live at twenty-two seventy-four West Clubview Drive in Glendale, and I have two boys at Parkway. Okay. And um, I don't, I hope it's okay to ask this question now, but um, back in the recorded meeting that you had on, I think, the ninth, the, the big Mamajamo meeting, um Mrs. Wa- Ms. Weiss was um referring to the situation at Parkway regarding the principal. Um, and then was cut off because of the financial situation, um I just was wondering if there's any way that you could provide parents with an update as to who the, who, what's happening at Parkway, um and obviously, I know there's huge problems um with regard to the finances and how this would potentially impact that, but I think the parents are owed an explanation of what's going on and who's in charge of the school at this point, thank you.
Yep, absolutely agree with you, um yeah, knowing that Dr. Smith came back last week, um, that, that's definitely in the works, having conversations, and there, there should be a communication out this week for families and staff.
Great, thank you so much.
Sorry about the delay on that.
It's okay. Thank you Katie. So she's, so, I'm sorry, so she has come back, or?
She's back part-time and that just happened very recently, so we're working out the details on how that's gonna look between their roles, we can communicate that out to you guys.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you Katie. Um, okay, I am not seeing anything, any other uh comments or participation at this time? Um, do, do, moving on to sharing of responsibilities. So, this is um, um, like a living, breathing document, what I attached to Board Docs was what I had. I actually even made an adjustment today cuz we added something, so I attached what we were at as of today. But as soon as um the admin team was notified that uh we were gonna have to take over some of the responsibilities in the business office, we created this working doc for each other, and then with Karen's um new job, we added her to this document as well. So, we are just deciding who the lead is on a lot of these pieces, and as things come in, like buildings and grounds or um things that I have to work with Tracy and payroll, or work with Theresa in accounting. We've just been adding things, a lot of the communication pieces that Karen has led, uh, like Infinite Campus Messengers and the website and Facebook, we've just worked with the support staff to divvy out some of those duties, the idea is that uh, we wouldn't look at as with a lot of things right now, we're waiting to figure out where we are with the budget, so we wouldn't want to, we're not going to replace Karen's position. Um, the hope is that we would wait until, to hopefully have somebody in place to start the next school year, but in the meantime, we have these roles divvied out or these responsibilities divvied out amongst the team. Uh, the message that I shared with the association when we met this morning, and generally with staff, is that just go to your immediate supervisor, if you have a question, if it's something that may, like, would have gone to Lindsay in the past or gone to Karen, go to your supervisor and then it'll be that person's responsibility to make sure that that person's connected and their needs are met with the right person um based on this document, and if it's something not on the document, then they'll reach out to me and we'll figure out who's gonna take that. Because I, things are likely gonna pop up that we didn't think of in the last week. Um, Karen's also agreed to just stay online with us a little bit and have access to some things for a while, just so as we transition and things pop up, if we need her support, getting people connected, she's definitely willing to do that. So it's just, it's a living, breathing document, and it's just keeping um the admin team in the know and who's leading on what, so that if staff needs something, we can provide that support to them in a really quick way, and make sure we're covering all the bases. The next step, obviously, um, I didn't hit Gus with this today because he was just getting acclimated but would be to sit down with him and look at what's on the document and just see what are the things that you would anticipate having taken over in the day-to-day business manager role? What are the things you want us to keep so that we can just then kinda parse that out too? So I don't know if you guys have any questions, it's public in Board Docs.
Yeah.
I have a couple, but I'll wait, um, my first question was, did you connect with Gus, so? So I'll wait for that, uh, Ben or Carla, do either of you have? Okay, I, Ben, did you? Sorry, I don't wanna. I did have just some, um. Um. So, for free and reduced lunch, um, that is TBD, I'm trying to, I'm wondering if that is like is this a, a, this happens on a rolling basis, or is there like a um deadline or certification by which you need to know who's going to be on top of that, cuz that seems like a pretty.
Yeah, no, we're okay right now, so it's something that happens in the fall in the early part of the year, so we're, we're good on that until next fall. Um, so it's just a verification process that Karen completed, um, it's like, you know, there's a direct for people that were already in the program, and then new applications, so that's all set for this school year, um, there's some monthly reporting that needs to happen for food service, and we did Gus actually helped us through that today, we had to submit um for reimbursement, and so I'm anticipating that's something I'll work with Gus on moving forward now for the, for these months. Um, but yeah, that was basically because it, the bulk of it happens in the fall, so we're okay right now.
Okay, um, there was uh uh, something, oh, so Black History Program funding, um, this looks like there's funding from the board, but that's not what happened, it was a five thousand dollar grant that Lindsay applied for.
Okay.
Approved for, so.
So then I'll look into that to find out where that is.
Where that grant is.
Yep. Thank you for helping us answer a question that we had.
Yeah, so I just want, sure, and that's coming up, so I think that's a priority. I mean, in my opinion, a lot of people who, okay, um, and then oh, um, it was the McKen- was it McKento Vinnie, but Vinnie, I'm saying it wrong. Um. McKinney Vento?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, was that on here before? I'm not seeing it now, hold on. And. And I did, sorry, as you're looking for that, I did connect with the grant writer. I know that Lindsay was working with a grant person helping us. And so I have a meeting with him coming up. So he may know about that Black History Month grant.
Okay, I, I, I can't see it now, but there was something about McKinney-Vento processing. And I think it's important to identify that person quickly, like fees or fee waiver. That was it. It was fee waiver for McKinney-Vento. It's not there anymore.
So that, oh, yeah, it is. It's at the bottom. I see it. Um, so that would be actually, and I'm in my live doc, so I'm sorry, it's not. You're not going to see these changes, but Denise is kind of our point person for McKinney-Vento. Kelly, I see your camera popping on.
Okay, hi, Kelly.
Hi. Yeah, so, um, we're going to work, the, those fees are waived, I believe, within IC. So we just need to kind of work through that process. And, um, right now I think that may be tailored, but we're still identifying that. So we'll make sure that the fees get waived for the students that need them waived.
Okay.
It could be tailored. And I have a meeting, um, tomorrow to kind of talk through some McKinney-Vento things.
Okay, good. Um, and then my last question was, what happened with WAC memberships? Did they get deactivated for staff?
No, so basically, and I, I actually just, um, circled that loop today because I got in contact. So the criteria for WAC memberships is that you have to go eight times a month. So there was a system where the people at the WAC would send a report each month over to Lindsay. She'd look to see, and then she'd email people that had like gone zero times and say, okay, make sure you're going next month or you're going to lose your membership. So it was just circling the loop on that. And so I can actually, I just didn't have time to adjust that. I actually got that information today, emailed all the people that were at risk. And, um, so I'm tracking that now because the idea is we don't want to pay a membership for somebody for two or three months and continually if they're not going. So it's just keeping track. So I can add my name to that because I actually closed that loop today.
Okay, great. Um, and then the, something I don't see on here, which maybe will fall under Gus or I don't know, but, um, around purchasing cards, purchase cards. I was wondering who would be responsible for reviewing that. I'm, I'm looking to bring a couple of our financial policies, uh, back to the board. Um, and one of them would be around purchase cards, which would require like a monthly report out to the board treasurer is one, one thing I want the board to consider. Um, and so I guess I'm just, I, I think maybe that would fall to Gus. I don't know, but, um, and I, I don't, I don't know the whole system and how it works, but, um,
that's just.
Yeah, I would say a combination of Gus and probably Teresa, our accountant. It's probably something she does now. So just making sure that whatever report you're looking for, that she running that, getting that to, to us each month.
Yeah, um.
Because there were some things that like Tracy and, and, um, Teresa cover that I obviously didn't put on this document because.
Yeah. Well, and so, so one thing we've talked about is sort of like, I think we've talked about this, like an organizational audit, right? As, as we look at, at these job roles and duties. I see your hand, Carla. Um, and so just, uh, thinking about memorializing, like what we're utilizing, um, Teresa for now as we go forward and what that job duty and description, like maybe it's a running document you're keeping about, you know, where duties end up staying or where they're going or what duties are not getting done, et cetera. So kind of utilizing this as a tool for an organizational audit at the same time. Carla?
Yeah, there was one line item. You asked like most of my questions. There was one line item in your list that I don't know what it means. Uh, license check and communication wise staff error.
Yeah, sorry. It's like, at, like our little, so we, you know, there's a, the DPI system that tracks, um, teacher licensure. So that was one of the pieces that typically went to the business office was just getting that report, seeing if there are teachers whose licenses are expiring or are expired. And so making sure that communication goes out to the teachers to remind them to renew their licenses. So I have access to that now. Um, Karen and I did one final one this week where we just printed off to like let people know. Um, and then just communication around that. Like one of the things we realized is if, if a teacher put in a work email address from a previous district, then they're not going to be getting reminders from DPI when their license is going to expire. So just helping support staff to make sure they're getting those reminders from DPI and then just making sure our teachers are, have updated licenses.
So Wise is their system?
Yep, yep.
That was my ELO.
Hmm, ELO is like license lookup, but Wise is the DPI system that just says to us like, you have errors because these staff might not have the right license or their license is expiring.
Basically, new teachers have to apply for lifetime licenses after, I forget how many years. And then teachers with lifetime licenses need a background check every five years, I believe.
Everybody needs one. Like I just did my background check. Yeah.
Yeah, every, every five years, I think.
Yep. So just helping support staff and communicating to staff that need to get that done.
Carla, you know what school dude is?
No idea.
I was like.
I can't keep a straight face and ask what is.
I couldn't either.
Ben knows.
Yeah, you submit, uh, issues there, uh, for, uh, like if you, if you need a light replaced in your room, you'd submit that request.
Well, dude, okay, all right. Okay, that I, uh, thank you for making this document. Um, I would say one other suggestion might be like highlighting some important deadlines or like if something is like quarterly or not due yet, because like a TBD can be alarming if you don't know that.
Well, and yeah, I apologize.
I know, it's for you. And so I think it's, yeah. Uh, okay, but as people, uh, like assume a role or a duty, if there's some pertinent information and they can just see it right away, that could be.
Yep.
Um, okay. I don't see any hands. Or if you don't know how to raise your hand like me and Katie, you could just blurt it out. Um, okay, that would move us on to, um, future meetings. Right, am I right?
I think so.
I have to toggle back and forth between my agenda and Zoom.
What do you think? Do we schedule one next week?
Well, we need.
And one for open enrollment.
Oh, yeah.
And Gus said that he'd be willing to join us. Um, I had the open enrollment conversation with him, so I, I'll, we'll have some more like numbers for you guys. Um.
How long does he need?
What?
How, how long would Gus need to, like, grasp an understanding of the situation we're in with open enrollment?
Nothing. He doesn't, we talked about it today and he's already got, like, we have a recommendation. We already talked through it. So he, he doesn't, it's just availability to a meeting.
So, yeah, let's ask him, when, when is he available?
I know that he's coming to the district on Monday, so I know he's available on Monday.
Okay.
I, I could meet on Monday at various times.
Um, same. Ben, how about you?
Well, I mean, typically, I, I mean, I could do four virtual. I could also do, if it's quick, I could do a lunchtime. I just, I don't know if it's.
I'm not sure. I feel like I want to make sure that Andy, let me.
Karen works, so.
I mean, can we do four?
If we can make it fourteen, I won't be late because I pick up my son from Glen Hills at three forty-five.
Do you think four thirty would be better for Karen? I'm not sure what time she gets done.
I don't think, oh, actually she was able to do, oh, no, we've met at seven on last Monday. Um.
You want me to text her?
Six thirty.
Tentatively say four thirty now and then.
Yeah, confirm the time. I can confirm the time.
To get maxed for him. Sure.
Okay.
I could, I could meet at four thirty.
Gus, are you still on?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me? Yes.
Can you do a four thirty Zoom on Monday?
Sure.
Okay. For the open enrollment that we talked about today.
Yes, yep, I'll be ready to talk about open enrollment.
Thanks, Gus.
And then if we need to schedule any additional meetings, we can do that Monday.
Sure.
Okay. Four thirty. Um, special, sorry, I'm putting it on the district calendar right now.
Oh, district calendar is yours now?
Yeah, I always had the power. I just let Karen do it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not on the document. Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, I think we're at that time, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of voice vote? I. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you, Gus. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Your last Zoom.